Of course they do.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Muskegon Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone here who's in our audience and anyone who's listening and watching at home. Let's explain a little bit about business at the Planning Commission meeting. Most of our business is done in the form of public hearings. In fact, the only two items on our agenda tonight are both public hearings. And a public hearing is when something is going to be requested to change. People who are within a certain area of that change are notified, and I'm sure that's why most of you are here tonight. The public hearing is operated such. I will open the public hearing. I'll give commissioners a chance to ask staff questions. Then I'll, when they're done asking staff questions, I'll ask the person requesting the change to come up, give their name and address, and present their case. Commissioners will then have an opportunity to ask questions of that individual. When they're done with that, then I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the audience who has a question or comment on the issue on the floor, I will call on you. Just raise your hand. You need to come to the podium and give us your name and address for the minutes. We will listen to you after everyone has had a chance to speak. If someone has some new information that they'd like to share a second time, only if it's new information we haven't heard, I'll let you speak a second time. Limit your comments to three minutes, and we will begin. Okay, roll call, please.
Ken Johnson.
Here.
Eric Hood.
Here.
Jonathan Syper, excuse, Destiny Keener. Joe Doyle. Brian Mazzade.
Here.
Joe Montgomery Keast.
Here.
Shawnee Blake.
Here.
Tim McCoskey.
Here.
Okay, next item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 31st, 2023.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Moved in support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same. Is there any old business to come before this committee today? Seeing none, we'll go to our public hearings. And we're going to do the public hearings in reverse order. We're going to start with hearing case 2023-24.
This is a request for a special use permit for a drive-through window at the Subway located at 1848 East Sherman Boulevard. The property is owned B4 General Business. The Subway restaurant is located in the southernmost suite in the strip mall development closest to Sherman Boulevard. Subway has requested an issuance of a special use permit for the drive-through. The existing entrance would be moved and a new drive lane would be added in front of the restaurant on the south side, which is currently grass. Customers would enter through the existing parking lot and drive east through the drive-through window, then turn right and exit out the curb cut on the southeast corner of the property. They would need to eliminate two parking spaces to make room for this drive aisle. We sent notice to everyone within 300 feet of the property and have not heard any comments from the public. After reviewing the site plan, staff recommends against the special use permit because there's simply not enough stacking space for the drive-throughs. Generally, you want to see at least three spaces for a car to park in a drive-through. This is only providing one, and it's most likely going to be causing some traffic concerns by those turning into the development off of Sherman. They will be met right away with a decision whether to go in the driveway or maybe having to avoid a car or two that will be sticking out into the drive-lanes. Also, if they were to wrap the stacking aisles to the north, they're going to be trapping in some of the cars parked to some of the business suites. So staff does not feel like this is appropriate place for a drive-through. A couple of years ago, this commission did approve a drive-through window at Pizza Ranch at the northern section of this development, but there was adequate stacking space.
Commissioners, questions? Mr. Chair.
So, Mike, is there any way that something could be reconfigured that would meet the, meet with your satisfaction in terms of stacking the cars?
As is proposed, I don't see a way to do it in the front. I initially, when I heard of the project, I thought they'd be coming in off of the east side of the building, maybe pulling in the back and going all the way the length of the building. It's a little awkward back there. There's cars parked here and there. Also, you would not be on the correct side for the drive-through. So that would be the only location I would see that would work with stacking spaces.
Thanks. Any other questions, commissioners? Would the individual making their request or their representative like to come to the podium? Give us your name and address, sir, and then tell us what's your proposal.
My name's Steve Parker. I'm with Hughes Builders. We're working with Subway to try to get this drive-through laid out. We were talking about stacking space, and I laid out a section. This shows the front of the building. And I've got just in, we've got the drive-up window right here on the east side of the building. And I've got four stacked here without getting down into the parking spot so we could get five, maybe six parking spots or five cars stacked for the window. So there is a few extra spots. I think Mike said five, and we've got that many at least. Are there any questions?
I don't believe that's the plan that was submitted.
It's the same layout. I just added some parking spots to it.
I have a question. So is the idea that...
Sir, we'll get to you in a minute.
Right. Where it says proposed asphalt, there's a, right now, there's a front of the building. It's a vestibule that sticks out. That will be removed, and if you notice, it says proposed drive-through window to the right of that. So we have the whole front of the building that we've got for parking, or for stacking.
Do you have a measurement from the window to where the parking starts?
Not off, I don't have anything direct, no. You're looking 50, 60 feet at least. That's just to the, where the parking starts.
Can I get five cars? It's gonna, it's gonna spill out. Which that's impressive, that's not good.
A typical car measurement in terms of parking is 18 feet. So if this is at least 60 feet, that should fit three.
And that would fit your parameters?
I believe so.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, well, I guess I want some clarification from Mike. You're talking about, if we're talking about 18 feet for a typical car space, and three would be 54 feet. So is that adequate for what you're looking for? Or, I mean, I want to, I want to be clear.
Yes, I would generally accept three as appropriate. For whatever it's worth, it's, it's still pretty close to that entrance, though.
So it would be three up to where? To, to the back edge of the sidewalk or out to where the edge of the parking space is?
I would say where the parking spaces begin, where the sidewalk, walkway is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there anybody in our home audience that wants to call and speak to this item? Please do it right now.
No calls.
Seeing no calls and no questions from the audience, what's your pleasure, commissioners?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Support.
Been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same. Public hearing is closed. What's your pleasure on the motion? Or what, what's your pleasure on the item?
I'm waiting for her to move it.
Ma'am, I move that the request for a special use permit for a drive-through window at 1848 East Sherman Boulevard be denied. Don't have to read the rest.
What was that?
Is that sufficient? The motion enough? Okay.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I recognize that there's some evolution of what had been presented before and what's been discussed tonight. And there may be now enough room versus the previous assessment, but it's really cutting it close. And you've got ingress and egress right there where the vehicles would be stacking, and there's potential for conflict there. And I witnessed other areas where you have drive-throughs and you got that stacking, and then you got people cross-traffic trying to get through, like for instance, Big B on Henry, where you got them stacking through the parking lot and not leaving the space open, and there's cross-traffic and people jumping in ahead of you. It just creates a cluster that is not a good dynamic, in my opinion. So that's why I continue to support the recommended motion, even though there may have been evolution in thought there. But continue to support the recommended motion of denial.
Our engineering department also shared concerns as well.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, or, excuse me, roll call, yeah?
And voted yes to deny, just so we know.
Eric Hood.
Yes.
Brian Mazzade.
No.
Jim Montgomery Keast.
No.
Shawnee Blake.
No.
Ken Johnson.
Yes.
So it doesn't pass.
What's the vote?
Three no's and two yes.
I didn't get to vote.
Oh, Tim McCoskey, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to forget.
No.
Motion fails. Yes, commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion that the request for a special use permit for a drive-through window at 1848 East Sherman Boulevard be approved with the conditions that were stated.
What are those conditions?
Well, the conditions are that pertain to the standards of approval for discretionary uses. Mike didn't list them here, but...
But that was for denial. That, that motion was written for denial. The recommended motion was for denial.
Okay, well, then I'll rephrase my motion. It's, it's just simply to, to require, that we move to, move that the request for a special use permit for a drive-through window at 1848 East Sherman Boulevard be approved.
We have a second?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I, I'll just want to reiterate that I think it's a danger allowing that there. And I think we're doing a disservice to patrons of that area, so I'll not support it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Well, the reason for my motion to support it is because the, Mr. Franzek indicated that it, it meets with his approval in terms of the necessary space, so that's why I support it.
Yes, question.
So, Mr. Franzek, you're recommended, you recommended that it did meet the, the space. Is this correct? Or it, it, it's too tight? Which is it?
I mean, quite honestly, with new information and not being able to review the plan as quickly, it might be pertinent to table this until we get a time to review it a little bit more. Because I do, I do agree that three should be enough, but I am still concerned with its proximity to Sherman.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Yes. I would welcome tabling this so that our planning department and engineering and public safety also can evaluate this and give their input as to whether this is acceptable there and does not pose a danger. And so...
If you're going to table it, there's no discussion on tablings?
Well, I haven't moved, made my motion yet. I move to defer this to, are you good with the next month's meeting? To defer this to, I move to defer, table this until our October Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, support for that one.
It makes it three. It's been moved and supported to table. There's no discussion on the table. Roll call?
Brian Mazzade.
No.
Jim Montgomery Keast.
Yes.
Shawnee Blake.
Yes.
Ken Johnson.
Yes.
Eric Hood.
Yes.
Tim McCoskey.
Yes. Motions have been tabled.
Yes, commissioners? Can I ask a question? Mike, can, can you tell me, you know, I understand you're concerned about not having enough time to review the proposed changes or the layout that the gentleman showed you. But were the, was the applicant aware that you were recommending denial of the request based on?
Yes, I reached out to Mr. Parker. I did not get a revised copy or anything before the plan.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're done? Ready to move on? Okay, next public hearing.
This is hearing case 2023-23. Stash initiated request to rezone all of the proposed, all of the properties owned R1, R2, R3, and RT in the McLaughlin, Angel, and Jackson Hill neighborhoods to Form Based Code Urban Residential. Just a few points on the topic. The majority of the properties in McLaughlin, Angel, and Jackson Hill are zoned for single-family residential houses. However, it does not match the reality of the neighborhood as each of these neighborhoods have a large variety of missing middle houses. There was a downzoning effort in the 1990s and early 2000s to only allow for single-family houses. This made existing missing middle houses legally non-conforming, which is also known as grandfathered. Legally non-conforming houses face challenges with financing from banks, which leads to disinvestment, and property owners may be prevented from accessing capital to update their houses. It also makes it difficult for new buyers to secure financing to purchase property. Much of the downzoning effort was led by the dissatisfaction of the existing multifamily homes. However, a lot of the missing middle homes, most of them built in these neighborhoods, were single-family homes that were carved up into three, four, or five units when there was little to no regulations on the zoning side other than allowing them to do that. We believe that the creation of this Form Based Code Urban Residential addresses all of those issues. You have to have a certain amount of property width to have a duplex, at least 40 feet. Anything under that, you're still regulated to only a single family. If you want to have a three or a fourplex, you have to have 50 foot of frontage. Also, to have a small multiplex, you have to have, you have to have an alley. So anything without an alley, you're still regulated to only single-family duplex or an accessory dwelling unit. And for everybody in the audience, an accessory dwelling unit is an additional house or small apartment, which you would traditionally see above a garage in the back of the property. The recent Housing Needs Assessment conducted for the City of Muskegon by the Bowen National Research has indicated the city needs to develop nearly 3,000 housing units in the next five years to keep up with demand and stabilize pricing. This large number of additional units cannot be met by building only single-family houses within this neighborhood, within these neighborhoods. The city has lost hundreds of housing units over the past couple decades through disinvestment and demolition. And many of these homes were demolished, were missing middle types. Once they're demolished, they can only be rebuilt as single-family houses, which forces residents out of their neighborhoods, reduces the housing stock, and ultimately drives up the cost of housing, which most likely can lead to gentrification. An increased housing stock, which serves to keep the housing prices stabilized, helps to reduce gentrification. So we know through city efforts and through private development, we are going to see a lot of housing development over the next five years. Only allowing single-family homes is going to raise the prices in these neighborhoods and keep people priced out. Over the past couple of years, the most notable concerns that have been brought forward by those opposing missing middle housing is gentrification. However, there has also been discussions how the new addition of housing could lead to gentrification. Any new housing to a neighborhood that has a potential for gentrification because new residents will be added to the neighborhood, and the concerns over a new identity for the area may arise. These are valid concerns from the neighbors. However, these concerns are true whether the new housing is single-family or a missing middle. When new housing is introduced to a neighborhood, missing middle housing actually helps fight gentrification by providing additional living options for different-sized families. Housing containing multiple units are cheaper to build than multiple single-family houses. Keeping rent stabilized is the best thing the city can do to reduce gentrification while constructing new housing. Only allowing single-family houses drives up the cost of housing and ultimately price residents out of their neighborhood. I do have an article I shared with the City Commission on Monday. This is from the Office of the White House. We don't need to read this. We've read many articles on the historic racial discrimination in the housing market by single-family zoning. And this is coming directly from the White House. And I think the most prominent thing in here is common examples of discriminatory zoning include minimum lot size requirements, which we've already addressed and reduced, minimum square footage requirements, which we've already addressed and reduced, and the third is prohibitions on multifamily housing, which we are trying to accomplish now. In November of 2020, this Planning Commission recommended eight-to-one approval for this initiative for these three neighborhoods. It was ultimately denied by the City Commission at a five-to-two vote. We did notify all properties zoned R1, R2, R3, and RT in all these neighborhoods, so we sent out over 3,000 mailers. We did have a few write-ins that came in after this was put out. We have Rashard Thrower, who is in favor of the rezoning. We have Ben Clank, also from the city, who is in favor of the rezoning. We received a letter from Anna Olden Brady, who I believe lives in McLaughlin, who is against the rezoning. And we, we received a letter from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, who requests that if we approve the rezoning, that we develop a community coalition that was outlined in the Mayor's Institute of City Design. And we also have a letter from Evelyn Ho, who is the president of the Jackson Hill neighborhood, who's not speaking on behalf of the neighborhood but as a property owner, that she is in favor of the rezoning. I also developed a chart. Do you know how to put this up? Um, sit down.
I just have a quick question for... Chairman, can I ask Mike a question really quick?
Yes.
Um, Mike, for the audience, can you just explain what you mean by middle housing?
Yes. So what we mean by missing middle housing is not single-family homes and not large apartment buildings. We mean anything between a duplex, a triplex, a quadplex, and an accessory dwelling unit. So this initiative is to allow all of those housing types in these districts.
Thank you.
Could you also explain accessory housing unit?
Yep, accessory housing unit, accessory dwelling unit is simply a small building behind your home that could be used for housing. Typically, you would see them over a detached garage, so a small apartment building on a property.
Can I show you any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Mike, there's a, there's a letter in here from somebody that references a couple of properties on Division Street. That's, are those in, as a part of this?
Could you repeat that?
Oh. There's, there's somebody that, there's a letter in our email from somebody that references two properties on Division Street?
Oh, no, that was on a different, that's not relevant.
Thank you.
I did develop a chart that we have on the overhead here that kind of goes over some of the things you can see with either single-family zoning or the Form Based Code Urban Residential zoning. I believe this is about as good as we can get it. Oh, here we go.
Thank you.
Yes. So, both of these districts help establish standards to develop quality housing that fits into the neighborhood. Both of them establish setbacks for privacy and safety, and both of them prohibit intense uses like heavy commercial-industrial. However, where we start to see the difference is we will not be able to achieve the housing supply that's recommended in the housing analysis. Can homeowners subsidize their mortgage with onsite rental income and create generational wealth? That's not allowed in the single-family districts, but it is in the Form Based Code. Provides housing options for a variety of family sizes and income levels. Form Based Code does that. Single-family does not. Single-family zoning actually helps to price people out of neighborhoods by eliminating housing options and creates non- and creates non-conforming houses and obstacles towards financing. It also displaces residents of property after disasters, non-conforming houses. A good example of this would be the Phoenix, which was the four unit that was developed, uh, in Nelson some time ago. That had been a fourplex, it burnt down. And had it not been for the form-based code zoning, we would have had to tell three families that they can no longer live on that property. So, this is the evidence for form-based code, and this is why staff is highly recommending in favor for it.
Yes, Commissioner.
You said in order to accommodate the duplexes and all that, the middle housing, um, a lot of those require a larger lot size. Can you give me an idea of how many lots are, uh, could potentially fit the middle housing in those neighborhoods?
Uh, well, they're gonna have to have at least fifty foot of road frontage, and they're gonna have to have an alley. Uh, in previous meetings, we did have maps, uh, that showed this. I don't have those readily available right now. Um, I can tell you that the southern half of McLaughlin, uh, has blocks like that. The northern part mostly does not. There's not alleys there.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't even be possible. Jackson Hill, uh, small section of Jackson Hill which would allow for it would be west of Wood Street. East of Wood Street, there's not many alleys.
Okay.
And in Angel, uh, we see more opportunity. There's more alleys there. So, there'd be a larger percentage in, in Angel.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, this is a staff-initiated request, so we'll open it up to the public now. If you'd like to comment, comment on this or ask a question, just raise your hand. When I call on you, come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Therese Williams. I reside at two eight eight East Isabella Avenue in the McLaughlin neighborhood. If my memory serves me correctly, not long ago, this very department asked to change the zoning in the area in question. The reason for the request was density. There were even pictures provided of vehicles parked in close quarters. The request was ultimately denied. So, now a polar opposite request is being made. It is no secret that in recent history, the city of Muskegon was well-known for swinging the racquetball. The concern that many, many residents have is that the city is allowed to change the zoning as presented. We are all subject to the whim of eminent domain. While on the surface, adding the extra new homes sounds like a great idea. The fact is that the existing property owners will experience a significant increase in taxes. This will certainly cause existing owners on fixed incomes to be priced out of their homes as they won't be able to afford their taxes. Finally, the information in this letter is written in a way that a layperson cannot understand what is actually being proposed. I consider myself relatively intelligent, and I don't know what this says. I didn't know what it said. I had to do some extensive research to understand what it says. And, um, I appreciate the information given by the White House, but the fact is, the White House doesn't live in our house. The reality is, right now, today, as we speak, our community neighborhood service is, uh, distributing funds that have been provided by Fannie Mae because of wrongs that was done in this very neighborhood through, uh, foreclosure, mishandling, and things of that nature. So, there is nothing to say that if we just give this open-ended without any, uh, control and without any regulations, that there's no, there's no, no telling how we would end up, and I would say that it's not on a good, uh, a good basis. So, I do want to have this revised in such a way, number one, that the people who are being affected understand actually what you're saying. I need this letter rewritten, and I need to redistribute it so that we all can understand, so that we can give an informed decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Tiana Williams, and, uh, my family home is two eight eight Is- East Isabella. I'm gonna have to hold this up. Um, so I just want to go back to some things that was stated in the summary, um, pertaining to gentrification. And I want to set us with a grounding definition of what gentrification actually is. So, there were statements made that says, um, I'm gonna pick up, um, here where it says, "Once they are demolished, they can be rebuilt as single-family houses, which forces residents out of their neighborhoods, reduces the housing stock, and ultimately drives up the cost of housing, which will most likely lead to gentrification. An increase in housing stock, which serves to keep housing prices stabilized, helps to reduce gentrification." I'm not sure if that was a misunderstanding of what gentrification actually is or if that was deliberately misleading. So, to help us clarify what gentrification actually is, we're going to refer to the encyclopedia of housing, of what housing, encyclopedia of housing defines as gentrification. The process of which central urban neighborhoods that have undergone disinvestment in economic decline, experienced a reversal reinvestment, and in the migration of relatively well-off, uh, middle and upper-class population. Within the last ten years or so, I would say, as we watch Muskegon go, we have experienced what strong towns recommend as revitalization of our, our core urban neighborhoods, right? So, one of the things that we left out in our summary and, um, even in that book which I've read, um, is the reason why communities were divested in the first place, which has to do with our history and our persistent behaviors of racism and structural and structural racism, be it that. And so, the bait and switch, clicky, um, propaganda that was sent out, that was misleading, as Ms. Williams talks about, unclear for people to understand, is part of that structural racism. And so, I, my position, um, because I do see that we have a beautiful waterfront as we see the homes that are going up now that have proximity to downtown and that water as being a lucrative opportunity. And let's, let's rewrite history by making it a lucrative opportunity for all. So, the residents that are here now, I propose that, um, if zoning is to take place, before zoning takes place, that they are, there are regulations attached that requires a progressive tax code to be written to allow, um, existing homeowners that may have low income or middle income or fixed incomes to pay their taxes on a sliding fee type of ordeal that will increase the likelihood that as the taxes, as the tax base increase, that they will be able to, to remain in their neighborhood and.
You're getting off, you're getting off subject, and you're way over your.
I'm not getting off subject, excuse me, excuse me. So, so then let me finish this. So, let me finish this. The proposed zoning updates as written, uh, positions the indigenous residents to be subjected to the will and morale of the developer. This means whoever has the means to build will have the authority to use the homeland of the indigenous residents as his or her capital venture playground with no obligation to ensure his or her development mitigates the chances of displacement either voluntarily through financial strains or involuntary as a result of eviction and foreclosure. So, before zoning goes in place, there needs to be attachment regulations that will position the residents as financial benefactors.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
And read How to Kill a City, and there goes the hood.
Who else wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none? Is there anybody in the home audience listening that wishes to call him?
Chair, this is a gentleman.
I want to know, I came because, like she said, this letter is very hard to understand. From what I understand is that you want to take single home residency and put a bunch of duplexes in. Or as many duplexes as they apply for, you want to put them in our neighborhood. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Sir, can you state your name and your head address?
My name is Isaac Hilliard. My address is seven six nine Wesley Avenue.
Um, excuse, could you repeat that, Mr., Ms. Hilliard?
What I wanted, what I'm asking is to, some clarification on this letter. Sounds like to me that you want to put duplexes where there's single-family homes now. Is that correct?
That's not correct, sir.
Huh?
That's not correct. We're talking about your single-family homes are going to remain. Nothing is going to happen to your single-family home. We're talking about the empty lots that right now, a person has to build a single-family home on those lots. And there's not a lot of people that can afford to build a single-family home in that neighborhood. So, we're talking about using those empty lots to put in duplexes or, or something like that that people can afford to get into. Not.
Builders can do that.
I would like to.
Yes.
I would like to point out this map here. Every color on this map, except for the green, or I mean, except for the yellow, is a missing middle-type house. These neighborhoods are full of missing middle types housing. They're full of duplexes. There's a lot of threeplexes and fourplexes. These are not single-family neighborhoods. The zoning only allows for single-family, which means all of these ones with the color, except for the yellow, are non-conforming. They shouldn't be there. We don't want to have zoning that doesn't reflect the reality of the neighborhood.
Vice Mayor?
Do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, Vice Mayor Willie German Jr., twelve forty Sanford. Um, I oversee Ward Two, where a lot of this development is being proposed to take place. And, uh, I have maintained close contact with the community over the years, and I warned you that this was coming, and now it's here. Working with the city over the years, and we talked about this in our department heads, we had several discussions and meetings throughout the city. And I've always opposed foreign-based zoning unless we have a comprehensive plan with restrictions. And I think for the most part of it, uh, the citizens and taxpayers have a right to voice their opinion, what they want and what they, what they want to see in their community. And this time is here. So, first of all, I don't think we should be in a rush and passing this today. And it has to come in front of the commission. I think it has to be thought out. As we talked about, we heard gentrification. That was a word that I was, uh, stating, and it was not a popular word on that commission. Did nobody want to talk about it? Did nobody want to talk about the racial disparities? Well, this is what we're seeing across America. You cannot build your way out of homelessness. It has to be affordable. It has to be attainable, but it has to be, um, affordable for everybody to be able to have a place to live. And when we talk about this affordable, I mean, this, um, zoning, and we talk about the missing middle, we talk about the income, we look at the income, who's gonna be in those areas that were not desired before? It's not gonna be people of color because they're already there. You're gonna see middle-class white families coming into your neighborhoods just like you see now. And the ones that's being pushed out and priced out are the ones that's actually living in the community, have been there all this time. So, when we talk about this zoning and what could be there, we have to hold developers accountable. We need to have a comprehensive plan, what we're gonna see to try to develop and have a, um, a, a community where they can prosper with businesses and other, um, commercial, um, um, businesses. So, I would suggest that we look more into this and get more input and give the community and the citizens a better understanding of what it is that the city in the direction that you want to go. It sounds good, you know, and I'm not downing our, uh, department heads or anything. I commend you for your work that you do, the planning commission. But when we talk about moves like this, we really have to sit down and make sure everybody's happy and everybody gets a understanding of what's gonna go into their community. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Way in the back?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kenneth Martin. I live at five zero five Yuba Street, located in Muskegon, Michigan. I would like to compliment the young people before me because I was a little concerned about what I've been watching on TV with our commissioners. And, uh, the commissioner before me, Mr. German, Willie German, you did a fine job. And prior before me, the young ladies. This commission should look at the individuals that, in our community first. I've been on Jackson Hill for thirty-three years. I was located when this first dilemma come up to Muskegon back in nineteen sixty-seven. And I watched the commissioners make some terrible mistakes, but I was too young to speak up. But tonight, I'm going to tell this commission, you are only looking at a fraction of the people that you're going to affect in our communities. And we are very interested in why do you have it listed at one, two, three, four, five different areas which you're going to distribute this in, in our areas? Let's start with number five first, other than looking at what we're going to do with number one, or two, or three in our locations. That would be a wise thing to do because apparently that's the area you think you're gonna have trouble with. You have already committed to the direction you are headed and which has been not very great for us as black individuals. I'm going back from nineteen sixty-seven, living at seven fifteen West Clay Avenue. If you, any of you are aware, most of our nationality people, we used to live in that area. It is no longer suited where we as individuals can actually come in there and afford to live now. And we don't want to see that same plight in areas that we as people tried to develop. And you notice I didn't just say black people. I said, "We" as people tried to develop. So, you need to take some time about this consideration and talk with people and individuals that it would really involve. Thank you for your time and efforts. Thank you again, Brother German. And thank you for the city of Muskegon coming out to be represented well tonight because this is important.
Thank you, sir.
And we need to all, and Mr. Tim, we need to all make sure that we take care of business properly.
Yes, sir.
Because you are an older individual, so you know exactly what I'm referring to. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Who else wishes to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Are you in the back?
Uh, Steve Benedict, business address is ten forty-two Terrace. Um, I, I graduated from Muskegon High School. I'm one of the developers, uh, in the Marquette neighborhood. And, um, I can tell you from a building standpoint, I, I understand what you guys are going through. But I can tell you, if you want to talk about raising taxes, the houses that I'm building for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's raising taxes. They're all single families. Okay? The house that I'm building is nineteen hundred square feet. With the city commission approving these lower building requirements, and I'll tell you firsthand, I'm not building any duplexes or triplexes. I'm not going in Angel. I'm building one house on Yuba, as you see go up right now. Okay? It's nineteen hundred square feet. Divide that by three. That's ninety thousand dollars a unit. It gets someone in there that makes minimum wage. And you're hearing it from me. Those two hundred and eighty thousand dollar houses, I get no subsidy from the city of Muskegon. The federal funds are nothing. I build them for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. After I pay a realtor six percent, the people moving into these neighborhoods that don't have enough money for closing costs six percent. If I walk away with twenty thousand dollars. If I walk away with twenty thousand dollars, I'm a happy man. That's not very much money for four months worth of work. And you're just hearing it from my side. I understand what you guys are going through. I walk these same streets, I mean, hell, it used to be, when I was in school, you couldn't walk to the corner store on Third and Mason. But things have changed, I get it. But we were also a class double A school at one time, we're battling B and a C. And you want to talk about taxes, everybody in this room, I believe, just voted for a hundred and twenty-five million dollar mileage for the school. That's where your tax money's going. I'm just saying, from my perspective, if you want to hear it from a builder's perspective, to make things affordable, you have to go up or you have to put more on one lot. And that's the only thing I can tell you. But I'm not a candidate to build on these lots. I just would like you guys to hear it from my perspective. If you want to talk about taxes, the people buying my houses, their taxes are somewhere around five thousand dollars a year. A year. And I've built fourteen of them. That's what raises your taxes. I don't believe, and maybe I'm wrong, someone can correct me if I'm wrong. Someone selling a duplex, triplex or four unit is not a comparable sales to an appraiser for a single family house. And, and that's just my two cents. So you guys got to do what you got to do, but I'm happy to work with the city and everything that I'm doing. But I'm a single family guy and that's where we're at with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, back there, behind the pillow?
Hello, I'm Jeanette Moore, stay at four oh three Erickson, Jackson Hill. Just got a couple of questions. One, I'd like to know, is this the same form base that Leanne and everyone came and talked about that we would be a part of and that we would be a part of the development, everyone in the neighborhood?
Yep.
And also, I'd like to know, will your taxes go up if you're living there already or will it stay the same? My thing is, I just want all of the houses to blend in, not be cookie cutters and that they be affordable. I had my house built twenty-three years ago through the city. I was a young mother, wanted a home for my children, and they had a program and we got my house built and I'm still there. At first, I wasn't welcome into that neighborhood, but now everybody comes to me for help in that neighborhood. So we welcome new neighbors, we just want it to be fair and no one wants to push out and lose their home. And we would like for the city to let us know, if you're building a house next to us, what it's going to look like, how it's going to affect us. So just be more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for being a good neighbor. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My call, three forty-two Catherine. The way I read this thing, it is, what it says is you get to do whatever you want and we have to trust you. And I'm telling you right now, uh, the government hasn't proven itself trustworthy. There, there is a process that we can use called a variance. If you want to build that house, bring it before the community and ask a variance for that building on that property. The next thing I'd like to say is, if, if we're going to do this, we ought to have a meeting in the neighborhood, each and every neighborhood at a time of day when people that are working can attend. Because I, I know that there's a lot of people that, that don't like this idea. And, uh, I'm one of them. And by the way, I'd actually benefit if this passes. But I, I, I still, I don't think the neighborhood would. And, and it's more concerning to me what, what happens in the neighborhood than what happens to myself when it comes to this. We've already been through this, a couple of years back, we had a neighborhood meeting over McLaughlin. Uh, was adamantly stated that people didn't want this. And the lesson I got was that not allowing big apartment buildings was prejudiced. Well, I, I'm saying ruining the neighborhood is prejudiced. You know, it's, uh, the people that live there know what they want, it's their neighborhood. Uh, and excuse me, but a planning commission that doesn't live there telling us what's good for us is not what we need. We need the people that are listening to what we want and what we think is good for us. You know, and so, I'm a little bit nervous here, but this, this idea of trying to continue after it's already been said no. Couple of years later, let's try it again. You know, and if it gets no this time, couple of years later, we'll try it again until finally it gets pushed on to the neighborhood. I, I think that is something that ought to be there. And one of the big questions in all of this is, you get these bigger buildings and you wind up with absentee landlords. People that control the neighborhood and live in a different city or even a different state. I think it's the biggest thing that anybody wants, to be able to take control of their own life. And if we've got like absentee landlords controlling the property, we don't have that. We don't have any say left. And, and I, I think that's part of what it is. Uh, uh, if there's money available and, and if you're putting in these, um, quadplexes and stuff, there's going to be government money in this someplace. If that money's available, why can't it be available to, to poorer people for single family homes? You know, uh, there's such a thing as called a starter home. You know, as people that don't have enough for the night, or twenty-nine hundred square feet or, excuse me, whatever it was, to, to get a place to get in and out of the weather and, and start to build a life. You know, it's, uh, it, again, I guess I'm going to finish with this. There's, there's this idea that the people have already said no once and they weren't actually heard because we're back here doing it again. You know, and, and again, if we're going to do this, we ought to at least have meetings in the neighborhood, each and every neighborhood at a time of day when everybody can attend. I appreciate that. And, uh, I'd appreciate it if you're told no, that we leave it at no.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else here at home that wishes to speak on this item? Last call. Yes, sir?
My name's Robert Ritter. I live at fourteen seventy-two Gyrock Street in Muskegon. My neighborhood is a predominantly mixed neighborhood. I've lived in that house for forty years. Most of the neighborhood anymore are not single family homes, they're rental properties. Somebody else owns the property and he rents them out to these people. You start building those duplexes and all this kind of stuff, and all it's going to do is it's going to raise up the, not only property values of my home, but it's going to raise all the rental properties that are associated with it. And I've seen those rentals go up, like in Grand Rapids and various other areas. They're paying as much as nineteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month. I don't know about all the rest of these people here, but if I was a young, younger person, even with a job, two thousand dollars a month is a lot of money. I'd be better off to go find a piece of land and build a house on it. So you talk about driving people out of the neighborhood, you just keep following the path you're going because you'll get it done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, Maria, back there, that's your chair.
Go ahead.
Hello, how are you?
Work fine, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good. Uh, so my name is Maria McIntosh. Uh, my address is actually in Jackson Hill, um, six forty-four Jackson. But actually, I am here in regards to our organization threads. So about a little, almost actually two years ago, it'll be two years in October fourteenth of next, I mean, October fourteenth will be two years. The city brought this same thing, like you all said, to the commission. We all received the same letter and we all responded with the same level of confusion. At that point, we connected and we formed a coalition to figure out what we should do next. It wasn't that we were fully as a, as a community saying that we wanted to abstain from any type of development, that we didn't want to see any positive change. Those weren't the issues. The issues were gentrification. Nobody had a real clear understanding of what it, what it was and how it was going to affect us. Over the course of a year and a half, that three neighborhood coalition has grown into an organization. Our organization, we seek to eliminate the negative effects of gentrification through homeownership, entrepreneurship and impactful community engagement. Um, what has never been addressed, even though we have put on events, um, that educated community in terms of gentrification, we have put on events that call for neighborhoods, I mean, residents to come out to voice these same concerns, too, with our Rap with your Rep event. Um, we have, we commissioned Northeastern University come in and do a study. Part of that study was how can the city, how can the community effectively work with the city and developers and to mitigate the negative effects of gentrification? With all of that, the way that the city responded to us was that, of course, they crossed those Ts, they dotted those Is, they created a community engagement department. Um, but that community engagement department, although it pushes out the newsletters, it does the social media, what it doesn't do is really address the concerns of the citizens with gentrification. Even with the housing study, the first couple pages says, there's really no way to deal with gentrification. But when we held our investment with justice event, we had seven points that elaborated on how to mitigate and eliminate, or work to eliminate the negative effects of gentrification. Many of the city commissioners came, the mayor came, nobody took notes. None of those things, we have the video, nobody took notes. And because of that, we're at this same, sorry, that's me timing myself. We're at this same place exactly two years later. And the only thing that has happened is that the city took those properties out of Brownfield, so they no longer have to bring them to Brownfield anymore to get approval. The city can automatically just give them out. They have not, we have not dealt with gentrification as a community. Our constant request to, to partner with community, I mean, with the city on a base level at the infancy stages have been met with silence. At least three members of the commission have not even responded. And we're a full organization that represents the community, full five oh one C three, on behalf of community members exactly like you.
Ma'am, you, they need to address the commissioners.
So at the end of the day, no, this is for the whole community.
You need to address the commissioners if you're up here speaking.
Okay, so this is for the entire community, the commission and the entire community. But I will maintain my focus on you. So moving forward, in regards to this particular proposal and in regards to community concerns concerning gentrification, those have not been met. Missing middle housing, that is well above what the house, household median income standards are for our area, which is thirty-seven thousand dollars for the city of Muskegon, a little bit more, and about thirty-four thousand dollars, a little bit more, for the city of Muskegon Heights. Their basis is off of an area median income that's a little bit over, I want to say, sixty thousand dollars. That does not address the concerns that we had proposed two years ago that have not been acted on. So again, until we're able to come to some conclusions on how we're going to have positive regulation, how we're going to have investment with justice to the community members that are already here, that moving forward can adequately be served, these new housing projects are not going to serve anybody that's within our commi, our community, because our community don't make missing middle money. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone I've missed? Okay, everybody's had your chance to speak. Nobody's on the phone line?
Make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Support.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor signify with a silent aye?
Aye.
Foes the same, public hearing is closed. What's your pleasure, Commissioner? Somebody say something?
Yes. So can I say something before I make a motion or not?
Yes, you may.
All right. Um, I, I heard some, I heard a lot of discussion about, um, we need to wait, we need to hold on and, and maybe have some more discussion. I'm not opposed to that, but honestly, you know, I'm prepared to move ahead and, and vote on this. I, I have had some concerns, and I've raised them before, about the form, form base code as it relates to, um, duplexes and triplexes and, and so forth. Um, integrating in single family neighborhoods, I, I don't like it, I don't think it's a good idea. And for that reason, I would make a motion to deny the request.
Support. Been moved and, and seconded to deny the request to make the changes. Any further discussion? Yes, there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Conceptually, I support form base code. Um, portions of it are in my neighborhood, I live in the NIMs neighborhood. I grew up on the east side of the city in Sheldon Park neighborhood. A proud K through twelve, K through twelve product and scheme of schools. Um, and I welcome form base code as a concept, as, as a type of zoning where it matches form with function and land use. I think it is an acceptable zoning tool. Um, and I welcome it in my neighborhood. It's in a portion of NIMs, I'd like to see it in entirety of my neighborhood, I do. Um, and I'd like to see it be used and implemented across our city. But I'm not, one, convinced that the form base code, urban residential context area is appropriate for the entirety of these three neighborhoods in particular. The entirety of Jackson Hill, the entirety of Angel, the entirety of McLaughlin. I think more consideration needs to be given to different contours of different context areas, um, rather than a blanket approach to the entirety of these neighborhoods personally. Um, I also think that we as a city have not done enough to help improve understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and also help ensure that our residents, our existing residents, have an opportunity to come alongside this progress and benefit from the rezoning and how they can utilize it themselves, how they can benefit, because there are benefits in there for our existing residents. Um, we do have, as was mentioned, um, we have a community engagement manager now. Um, that was something very important to me and our commission that we established. And we have been improving our communications and we've been improving our engagement in a number of different ways. I do not think that we, um, did so well on this particular item of rezoning. We did have meetings out in neighborhoods with regard to housing needs assessment and met with our residents, um, from that perspective. Um, we also had them, we just completed a master land use plan, uh, for the entirety of the city of Muskegon. The first master land use plan in a quarter century. And that consisted of thirty meetings throughout our city. Not here, not here saying, come see us at city hall and talk to us at city hall. No, we went out all across the city into the neighborhoods to confer with our residents, to have our residents help us write, have our planning department. We've got excellent people in our planning department. So my opposition to this right now is not an indictment of our planning team or our staff. We have excellent personnel, talented, uh, professionals. And they did a phenomenal job in developing that master land use plan and having our community write it in concert with our staff. Um, and we're going, and part of that is looking at rezoning across our city to create more flexibility in housing options, create more opportunities. Um, it was mentioned earlier about starter houses. We've lowered minimum lot sizes, we've lowered minimum square footage in order to bring the cost down for these starter houses for the new to, uh, for someone that buys a piece of property, wants to build, that can build a small house, a starter house at a lower cost and add on as their families grow or as their needs grow. And so our city has been intentional about trying to bring housing affordability. But it's really challenging when there's, after decades of disinvestment, and now we're seeing growth. Now we're seeing interest in our, in our city. Um, and so you're, you've got a lot of different, uh, dynamics, uh, and, and factors coming into play that complicate things. Uh, but where there's a will, there's a way. And I know there's a will, um, amongst our city team to find a way forward that is going to mitigate the worst effects of gentrification and make sure that our residents are taken care of while still welcoming newcomers to our city. Because we do not want to be hostile to newcomers. We want to be a growing vibrant city that's going to, um, care for our own while welcoming newcomers because they add to the dynamic of what we're becoming as a city. So that's why I think... So that's why I think that, I was surprised, kind of surprised to see this brought forward. A staff-initiated rezoning of this prior to, you know, the letters going out prior to communicating with the commission or conferring with us about how do we revisit this? Because this was done 21 months ago and it was tabled. And to my knowledge, no changes to the proposed zoning have occurred since then. It's the exact same thing that was there, you know, two years ago. And that does not reflect, in my opinion, incorporating what we've heard from our community. And so that's why I concur and support Commissioner Mazzade's motion on rejecting this time, but I do not reject form-based code. I do not reject this as a tool for growth in our city and creating more housing choices, not just for newcomers but for our existing residents, housing choices for existing residents and opportunities for them to have, us to have accessory dwelling units that can create income opportunities and support multi-generational wealth. Also the possibility, although it's not in this zoning, but having accessory commercial units, so we have neighborhood enterprise. We've heard that through our many meetings throughout on master land use plan. People want to see those cornerstones come back to their community. They want to see that commercial activity. And so those are things that I'd like to see factored in and move forward with. But right now, I'm not supportive of what, of the existing proposal for rezoning of the entirety of these three neighborhoods. So thank you for your patience. I know I said a whole lot there. But this is a very important topic and it's one that has long-term implications for our residents and our community. And I do think there's more consideration, more reflection, and more engagement with our community to move this forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hood?
Yes. I'm not the smartest cookie in this room. But I do think that I did hear some misinformation that's out there. But I cannot, I cannot ignore when I look out here and see how many people on the east end of town that has come out to this meeting. And that means a lot because our voices are never heard at these meetings because we don't show up. But, I mean, I am for form-based code, but I'm going to vote for you because you showed up. And this is what we need more of is people that look just like this audience, all different colors, to be at these meetings and to speak their mind and to give their opinion. So that's why I'm going to vote no on this tonight.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So I apologize, guys. I am a newcomer. I am a new homeowner. I've been in my home three years in June. So I bought a home right across from Hackley Hospital, which is now going to be Muskegon Middle School. They have built several single-family homes in my area. I can count about 10, probably more, that are now priced close to the $200,000 range. I purchased my home three years ago for $60,000. I could not afford to buy a new, single-family home in my area right now currently. So unfortunately, I will have to vote no.
Yes, Commissioner?
Just one clarification. Commissioner Hood mentioned that he was going to vote no. And I hope that he will vote yes.
There's no motion. Yeah, there's a motion to...
There is a motion.
Commissioner Mazzade made a motion.
The motion is to deny.
Right, right.
Who seconded it?
Anybody else?
Where did I go? Sleep?
I'd just like to add what's been already said. I believe in form-based coding. I believe that form-based coding would solve many of the problems in the neighborhood, and the biggest one is gentrification. Just take a look at Nelson Neighborhood. Nelson Neighborhood is right next to downtown. Downtown is flourishing right now. The next place people are going to be going is going into the Nelson Neighborhood. They're going to be buying empty lots and they're going to be building three, $400,000 houses there. And they're going to price, you're going to be priced out of the neighborhood. Form-based coding helps eliminate that problem. The biggest problem I see tonight by ear turnout is the city has done a shitty job of explaining what form-based coding is, or you wouldn't all be here. So I'm going to vote no on, or I'm going to vote yes on this to deny the change also. Anybody else? Okay. Roll call.
Jill Montgomery Keast.
No.
Shoney Blake.
Shoney Blake. It's a yes or no? Yes to reject or no to move it forward? It's a yes to reject. Oh, okay, yes.
A yes to reject.
It's a yes for you then, Commissioner?
Yeah, a yes to reject.
Wait, the motion is to deny. Yeah.
But you understand that in the audience? If we vote yes, we're meaning no change.
Confusing. We're confused. You got to be really confused.
Yes, I do not support.
I've been in the McLaughlin neighborhood for over 50 years. I've been to our three miles. Now this motion that you just passed, is you going to change this next year?
No.
Is this going to be a rule or law?
This is to deny. Deny any change. Everything's remaining the same.
Right.
But now my question is to deny it. You were voting to deny this, but now two years from now, three years from now, are you going to change that or are we going to have this meeting again?
Ma'am, can you read the future? Because I can't. I'm sorry. I don't know what's going to happen in two years.
Yeah, that's the study.
Ma'am, all we do, all we do here as commissioners is do the agenda that's presented to us. We don't make the agenda up. So I can't tell you if two years from now, the city's going to come back and do the same thing. Maybe they'll go out and do a good education job in your neighborhoods and change people's opinions and if people will want it to come back. But I don't have, I don't have a handle on the future. So I can't answer your question.
We need to keep voting.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
Yeah, no, but there needs to be a clarification. This is coming in the next city commission meeting. So regardless of our vote tonight, we vote, the vote we're making is a recommendation to the city commission. Right now, the motion is to deny it. Our recommendation to the city commission is to deny this zoning change. That vote of what we take tonight will be referred to the city commission and the city commission will revisit this or visit this in the very near future. Possibly, quite possibly, at the earliest opportunity, which would be September 26. So in just under two weeks. It will come to the city commission. The city commission will take into account the recommendations from the planning commission, the staff's recommendation, and then the city commission will be the final say on whether to adopt this or not. The city commission can direct staff to reengage our community, approach us differently, make changes. So I just want you to know, this is coming in two weeks, just under two weeks, to the city commission. This does not, if we approve to reject now, it just doesn't kill it. It's coming in the city commission in just under two weeks. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify.
So they're the guys you got to get after, not us.
There you go. Pass the buck.
Why don't y'all just say yes to reject?
We're going to finish.
Ma'am, we're following Robert's rules of order, please. Roll call.
Ken Johnson?
Yeah, yes to reject.
Eric Hood?
Yes.
Brian Mazzade?
Yes.
Ken Mahal Speed?
Yes.
Motion passes to deny the change. Okay, is there any other business to come before this committee? Seeing none? Does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to?
Final thoughts?
The city commission meeting, it's an open meeting?
Yes.
Is that here, in this room?
5:30 Tuesday, September 26th, it will be in this room. If you're not able to join in person, you are welcome to watch on Channel 96 or on YouTube or Facebook livestream. And there is a phone-in option as well for public comment. So if you're not able to be here physically, you can...
I repeat that, 5:30, September 26th.
That's the earliest opportunity, and I heard that that's likely. Mr. Franzik, can you confirm, will this be on our September 26th? Yes, it will be. Yes. So September 26th.
Be here.
Be here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Franklin, could you explain that term you kept using?
I'll meet you after this meeting, yeah.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Eric.